So, good evening, everyone. This is July 2nd, regular meeting of the Rockland Town Select Board. Matt Geddy, Kurt Hathaway, and Joe DiNardo present tonight. And if you would all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Alrighty. So, we have done the point. So, we will suspend voting on the minutes from the last meeting because we do not have enough folks that were at that meeting to vote on. We have circulated the minutes or the bills. Those are all taken care of. Any board member announcements? Good. Um, I do not have as acting chair any updates or things other than I hope everybody's enjoying the sunshine. Any questions from the floor? Public comment? Anyone that's not on the agenda? Dave, do you have anything you might want to bring up?
No, the, well, if you're looking to go to the Regional Planning Commission offices, they've moved to Evelyn Street.
Evelyn Street.
Right behind where they were. The move was supposedly completed last week.
Okay. All right. Now, I don't see anybody there. So, we will start with Barbara Noe Spohling. Good evening, Barbara.
Evening. Good evening. There we go.
There you are.
Yeah, Dave, we've completed the move. We're in.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep. So, um, yeah, I'm not used to going right off the top like this. Um, not too much. We, you remember the Pocket Park is Center Rockland Falls? So, we've been waiting and waiting for the relicensing, the federal relicensing of GMP's dam there. Because they own most of the land, so it has to kind of go through that process as well. What has happened recently is that there has been an archaeological review done for that relicensing. And everything doesn't look like it's going to be any roadblocks there. They, the contractors, the independent archaeological people said, because it is small, and they looked at the 15 projects that have been proposed for that, so they consider them relatively low impact. And it's already in a highly impacted area. I mean, that area's been used since before the Europeans started using it. Native Americans were there using the falls fishing there. And then there were mills, and then dams, and lots of housing, all that kind of stuff. So, whatever is there has been somewhat disturbed anyway. So, they're not too concerned about that. They said, there were a couple of things, they said, that might require additional review. And that is if the canoe and kayak launch and spur trail go through, and those are way up on the northern end of this parcel. They, they might want to do some additional review depending on how much ground is disturbed for doing that. And for the brush removal in all of that woody, you know, dense area along Simons Avenue. If there were stumps removed and roots removed, they might want to see some more archaeological testing of that affected area. Because again, it would be disturbing the land. So, pretty good news. It does go to the, the Division of Vermont Historical Preservation, just for a look through. And see if they agree with the archaeologists that were contracted by GMP to do this review. So, I'm thinking, I'm hoping this is one of the last things to be done for the relicensing. And that we may be able to take a much more serious look at this after that. Any questions on, on that?
Yes, you're good.
Okay. And the only other thing I had is the legislature this past session passed legis, passed an act that would require river corridors. There's some wetlands language in there as well, and some other things. So, the Planning Commission, I was kind of waiting to see if that, that was going to pass. And it did, and it made it through, you know, the veto process. So, the question is now, is that, that act will make river corridors mandatory across the state. It's going to take a while to roll it out. They're going to go to, somehow they're going to go to most of the municipalities in the state to talk over this. They're going to get input. And what actually comes out of that and gets in the rule for this act remains to be seen. But the legislative intent was to have river corridors everywhere. So, the Planning Commission, we'd been kind of holding off, and we decided, we talked to some of the folks at DEC about how wise it was to go ahead now instead of waiting to 2027. And of course, DEC, you know, said, you know, go ahead, you know, we think it's best. But there's some reasons they give for that. And the, the Relief Assistance Fund that we've talked about, the Emergency Relief Assistance Fund, may go away with this new act. So, it might be, might behoove the town to get that rate locked in for future disasters. So, we're going to, we're going to start over, take a look at that. Do something for the townwide celebration, some kind of education there at our booth, and go from there. We've, you know, it divides properties up between the commercial, industrial, retail ones, and personal ones. So, we, we did that. The Planning Commission did that, just to make it easier to, to communicate about this. So, yeah, lots of things came out of that legislature. And, you know, there's, some of the Act 250 reforms are going to impact towns without zoning. We can get into that at a later time. But right now, we're looking at river corridors.
So, is that pretty much it, Barb?
Yeah, that is. I don't have much else to report.
Any questions for Barb? You know, they're going to make us do that one way or the other.
Yep.
It started out as being optional, and now it sounds like it's going to be mandatory.
Yeah.
Very good. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Mike, you're up. As long as you're up, you're up.
Uh, not much to report, other than the first two weeks of lessons went really well. We took this week off as far as swim lessons, and then we will start next. This coming Monday, the 8th. People can sign up tomorrow. They won't see this in time, but people know that they can sign up tomorrow for the next session. Our enrollment is good. Our groups are good that are coming in the afternoon. And we've had great weather, so we really can't complain. When there's good weather, people come to the pool. The only other thing I have is with the senior part, we're going to try to do a luncheon in probably, if I'm looking at the calendar, probably the week of the 22nd. Then they like to do Tuesday, so probably the 23rd of July will be our senior luncheon, is what they traditionally like. So, when Mary comes back, I'll chat with Mary and, and try to get that going. Love for everyone to be in attendance, to show their support. And just to hang out with the seniors, and it'll be up at the pool, like we traditionally do in the summertime. Again, in touch with Byron, because he is our cooker and our meat supplier. So, I will get that all nailed away. But that's coming up. We'll kind of plan on that. Other than that, things are growing and mowing, and that's the way it goes. Things are good in the pool.
Pool happy. The pool happy as happy can be.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, you can't complain, you know? Warm weather means the water is warm.
Yeah.
That way the little kids are happy, because it's not freezing, you know, that kind of thing.
What's it up to?
What's it up to now? Uh, it's, it's probably approaching 80.
Oh, wow.
Well, remember, when it's, when it's warm, it's warm. But the minute it goes cold, it goes cold too. For whatever reason, but it's probably up there.
Forty-six the other night didn't help.
No, it doesn't, because it, it literally, for that, for that pool, for whatever, as soon as the temperature in that pool just changes dramatically with the temperature outside. It does not like to retain any kind of heat.
Imagine, I wonder if newer pools are more insulated to the ground temperature. Ground temperature is usually about 55 degrees.
We don't cover it, other than the winter, and we don't heat it.
No.
So, we, whatever Mother Nature kicks out, we kick, you know, that's what we provide, that kind of thing. But no, everything's running smoothly up there, so I think we're good to go. Oh, I would like to thank Mark Foley. He, he's not in the Happy Cow business anymore, but he gave us a call the other day, and a big shout out to him, because he brought his leftover ice cream down to the pool for us to distribute. So, I want to really thank Mark for all his years of helping with us. And then he offloaded probably about four or five cases of ice cream for us to sell. And so, thank you to Mark. I know he's been a big help during our townwide celebrations, and he's not this year.
Will be missed.
But he will be missed by a lot of people. But I want to thank him for, for reaching out and doing that. So, that's a huge help. And then the other thing is, for the July, we were, we're open 12 to 5 for swim, and then we're going to close the gate about 8 o'clock. I'll get in touch with JP or whoever's, whether it's Mike or JP that night, whoever it is, and have them lock the gate, because our fireworks are taking place on the 24th of August, townwide celebration night.
We'll make sure that information is out in every place we can think of putting it. Help people, but there will be people up there looking.
Oh, my phone has been ringing about.
I think.
Another thing. So, do you have fireworks? Do you guys have any questions for me?
I asked you my question, so we're good.
Awesome. Thank you. Have a great night. Have a great fourth.
All right.
Have a great trip. Drive safe.
Larry Delvin, Larry's on there. Larry up there. Larry's not here.
Joe.
Yep.
Should report, I was going to mention this last time, I forgot. Larry did get his trailer.
Yes.
Generator was on it.
Yep.
You got, got it for less than we authorized.
Yep, I got it. I got a tour.
Oh, I'm sure you did.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But that's, that's a good setup right there, because that trailer now is mobile, and it could be used for a variety of
Used anywhere.
In, in the town. And I did tell him I'd work on finding him a different, you know, we'll see if we can get a residential muffler for that. So, it's a little quieter. That's a, just a tractor muffler, but we're working to get him a different muffler. I got to go up and measure the stack size, but, but that'll be a good setup there. And think a thank you to the highway for putting it on the trailer.
Well, the next day, he came down and he gave me a hug, and I'm pretty sure I'll never be the same.
We're good there. So, all right, Dave, your turn.
All right. We spent some time. It was kind of tricky, because we had to be out of there by 9:30, quarter to 10. But Mike has a, the hill that comes down from the playground, down in the lower parking lot. There was a pretty good ditch at the bottom of it. And he wanted, he would like, he was planning on doing some kind of like a sledding event during the winter or something. So, we filled that in. So, we spent, I don't know, three mornings up there, I think.
That wasn't there to catch water?
It's a sand pit. There's never any water in it. It just disappears into nothing.
Yeah.
So, so.
And that's paved driveway.
And the, the, you have paved asphalt.
That's all driveway, so good. It becomes a problem, then you'll have to.
Then we'll address it. But we had a couple gully washers here, and one day when we came in, I, there's, you don't see where any water sat there, anything.
Yeah. Only time it'd be an issue is in the winter, and nobody's ever down there in the winter, so.
On the slide. They want, they want snow and ice, right? From scooting right down there.
There's a, a couple rocks on the bank, so we, we've already got it, kind of a jump figured out for those guys. It'll be fine.
And don't tell the Jericho page.
We took a day a couple, last week, and paved some driveways, aprons that we did. We replaced a couple culverts up on, one on David, and another one on Deborah. And we just kind of backfilled them, and so we had some time last week, went up and paved those aprons back in. Took some time, actually, later that day. Had a couple trees came down. Barbara was talking about Simons Avenue, in about two more years, there won't be any of those box haulers on Simons Avenue, because we pick up about three of them a year. And there's, we got another one that's uprooted now. It's just kind of hung up, and we're just going to leave until it tips over. But those things are coming down in a pretty good clip right now, so. And speaking of Simons Avenue, somebody took a high-speed stop into the guardrail, oops, on Simons, last night. So, I got a call in to Lafayette, get that, an estimate on that. They took out about 60 feet of it. If it wasn't for that guardrail, it'd have been in the drink. It had gone right between two trees.
They'd have gone through the park.
They would have been in the park.
They'd have been in the park.
They'd have been in the park.
Could have been a whole archaeological dig.
Yeah.
Just, so, if anybody hears about anybody that had their, I talked to Teddy this morning. He said there was no police report or anything like that from state, county, or local, so.
Somebody must have heard it.
Somebody towed him out of there, because Scott from Johnson called me on it and said he's got video of the tow truck pulling him out at 2 o'clock in the morning, but the video isn't good enough to figure out where the tow truck is. So, they smashed it good. I mean, it was, it's wadded up pretty good.
Terrific.
So many tow companies, right?
Yeah.
There's only so many tow companies there.
Somewhere less cooperative.
Yeah, that's kind of what we were figuring.
Figured.
This will come back around when we talk about the committee meeting, but I did go to Gauwitz. And you can't really get in there. You just got to call. There's a number on the door. So, I called, and I called again today and left messages for him to call me to go down and take a look at that. He'll make sure they're interested in it. Kurt and I went down after the meeting, and it's definitely doable, so. Soon as I get.
Pretty easy to do, really?
Yeah. Soon as I hear from them, I'll meet with them and try to get their blessing. We'll go from there. As I said earlier, the roadside mowing machine, we put it, started putting it back together yesterday. We got it back together this morning, and it's out and about. We're doing kind of a single pass on everything, just to get everything kind of cut back, and then we'll hit it, you know, another month and a half or so, and kind of get it for the, for the later in the year.
Keep your eyes on my little plants. Don't let them go to seed.
We're working on it.
Because if they go to seed, the three-year cycle starts.
Funny, because some places they're like this, and some places they're like this.
Yeah. Lock the sun out at the farm now, on the bank there.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to.
Kill them.
Trying to hit the, the worst spots. Now, I've, I've lost five weeks.
Yeah, it's going to kill you.
I started this the day after Memorial Day.
Yeah.
And we broke down, and that was it, so.
Do the best you can. But if they do go to seed, that
Yep.
Cycle starts all over again. And the other thing that when we do it, and I don't know, you guys usually mow to the right of way, but I think we should put something on your highway Facebook page, or whatever you guys got out there, that there'll be an attempt made to eradicate them as far as you can reach. Because if you leave one plant just outside the right of way, it starts all over again, so. But it'll be a time-consuming job to get rid of them.
Yeah, that's why we're, right now, we're just trying to knock things down.
Yeah.
And then we did Creek Road today, and hit Grove Street, the lower end of Grove Street from McKinley down, because that was pretty bad in there.
Yeah.
And went down to Creek Road, did Boardman Hill, and he kind of mowed his way back up Post Road when he finished up. So, tomorrow, we're going to do Post Road, these Pittsburgh Road, kind of work our way up into those neighborhoods, and
Yeah.
Kind of keep chipping away at it.
Sounds good.
And that brings us to committee meeting.
Okay, so, we have a committee meeting. We also have a Vtrans paving grant. That is what you are going to do post road, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, this is Vermont, State of Vermont Standard Grant Agreement. I think this is stuff we've entered into. So, I don't read any particulars. I, total award amount's $115,200 for this grant. So, there's three of us. We either all got to agree, or we'll have to postpone it two weeks, so.
I can't make motions. It's money.
Yep. You have to second it, Matthew, if you're interested, because.
Because you're chairing, yes. I'll second it. Was there a motion over there?
Yeah. Kurt made the motion, you second it. So, any discussion on this? This is to do approximately 2,900 feet of Post Road Route 7 up past the school. Is that right?
Nope, nope, nope. Just passing that terrace, starting up the hill. There's a seam right there where they took off and went up the hill for the school.
That's where you're going to start. All right. And this also requires one signature, so.
Move the acting chair signs. Second.
Okay with that, Matt?
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion on the paving grant? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. And I'll oppose, so we're good with that.
Thank you.
Today is 7/2.
We have a 20% match to, just, for the minutes.
I think that was all flat when they were, and then. Okay, that goes back in the green folder. All right, so, last Wednesday, the 26th, we had a highway committee meeting. We discussed numerous things. We discussed the intersection of Simons Avenue and Route 7. We had a Vtrans representative here, Chris Taft, and he pretty much told us, it's up to us. It's kind of on us to do it. There was the issue with cars coming off of Route 4 at high speed, because it's a slip lane type configuration. The way to stop that would be to look into a teed intersection. We pulled up some maps and Gauwitz own property on both sides of Simons Avenue. So, what Dave was referring to was Kurt and him went down and looked at that intersection, and there's a building there. It would be possible to come down Simons and make that kind of a right turn, and then out onto Route 7. The town owns right up to, I believe, Gauwitz property. Is that right, Bill?
Yeah.
We own right up when the central and fire station was built, the railroad owned, I think it was a Proctor-Pittsford Railroad, I'm pretty sure. But they gave us the right of way. And the lands that went with it. So, we own right up to Gauwitz. So, this could possibly be done on our own property. Not a whole lot, you know, there'll be some expense, but it won't be that. So, we're going to pursue this. That was what the recommendation of the committee was to pursue it.
The old rail bit, the rail bit is still there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The lines of sight are good. We just have to come down far enough for that last driveway to intersect with the road. And then, what that might, and I think Gauwitz would be in favor of this, we talked about it, is that means the road does no longer bisect their property. They would be able to, that would, the road would go away where it is, and that would be all, that would all be open to them, so.
So, is this involved in land swap?
Probably. Well, actually.
Really a swap?
I don't know. We just give them the road. We just give them the road back, because we already own the other way.
It might be a little swap, because they're
Yeah, we might.
Behind that little building, it like comes out into a triangle, and might need like
Yeah.
Little bit of a point of the triangle, but like the size of this room, maybe.
This was a situation that Chief Dumas brought up to us, so several months ago, about the cars and the speed on there. And this is one way of slowing them down. So, we're going to look into that.
There's quite a bit of sumac there between that last driveway and where we were kind of looking at it. We just got to figure out where that property line is. I mean, there's, there could be potentially a huge area that we wouldn't even have to deal with that.
Yep.
You saw Gauwitz piece.
I think once we, when we, to see how the board, full board, but I mean, I'm, I think we'll go down and get some surveys done, see where the property lines are, and then we can lay out what we want to do. And, and, because we can put a road on our property.
Right.
We couldn't have any issues there. Okay. The next thing that came up was the 2015 F350, we've been trying to sell since February. A month ago, we gave Dave permission to try some, whatever creative methods he could. So, they took the truck around several places, showed it to a new number of people. We received, as far as I know, one official offer on the truck from Andrew Patch in the sum of $9,000. And the committee had liked to recommend to the full board that we accept that offer on the 2015 350.
Save your motion.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? I do know we did our due diligence to try to sell this truck.
You worked it.
Tried too hard.
Yeah. All right. So, no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, so. Would you take care of notifying Mr. Patch?
I, yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks. All right. Who has the title and paperwork? Do, that somewhere? He's, he's going to need the title.
I think, I believe the title's in the title file.
Okay. You know, an interesting story. The town fire department had some GCV stock. And we could not, when we wanted to surrender it, they wanted, we could not find a stock certificate. So, we had to spend money to get a duplicate stock certificate. And we sold the fire truck, and they took the title out of the title folder. And the certificate for the GE or the CV stock was in the title list. The last place I would look.
Why would you look there?
But we did find it. And it was like a month or two after we paid several thousand dollars to get a duplicate, because you have to pay a percentage of what the stock is spending. All right, so that will take in care of. We did receive a letter from the Homeowners Association up on Windmere asking us to agree to a memorandum of understanding for paving, and the highway committee turned that down. And we did send a letter that is, is in your packet to inform them that with numbers and phone numbers and stuff for paving and fuller sand and gravel for them to contact them directly, to see if they're interested in doing something. Give them a number. We discussed at length that the only way that we would probably put them on with our grant or our paving bid is if Dave was paving in the area, and the contractor was okay with that, but they would be dealing directly with the homeowners association, and we would not be paying for the paving and then being reimbursed. That's probably the best way to deal with stuff like this. So, that was our recommendation. So, this, did you send the letter out, Bill?
I did, yes.
If you did. Okay, perfect. So, that's okay. So, there we are with that. But we did the post road, so that's taken care of. And I don't see.
The only thing in your packet is a letter from a person about some plow damage.
Oh, yes, there was a plow damage.
Taken care of.
All taken care of. Okay, I thought that. Yeah, all right. Perfect. Very good. And we do have in here a letter to, this letter is in here somewhere for Chris Taft. Is that what you told?
Yes.
All right, we have a couple letters just for thank yous, and all the board members will need to sign that. So, the three of us can sign tonight, and the other two, when they're available, those are in there. So, I think that pretty much wraps up highway. Do you have anything else?
I do not.
All good.
Other than we have, our beavers are back.
You are trying to
Back in the game.
Deal with Mother Nature.
Mother Nature.
And they are determined. They like that spot.
They love that spot. Right now, that little ditch behind where Lenny used to park is probably a foot from the top.
Yeah, yeah. Fabulous.
Dave, is that now my moor's on?
Yep.
Just down the table, I'm telling you that. You're back.
They're back.
Yep.
And they're, they're crossing the road. They've got trails going down over the bank to the culvert on the other side. That's about half, they got the culvert about half full right now. I don't know what's going in. It's giant. There's like paths, like, like walking paths in there, like.
Yeah.
Thanks.
One got hit by a car earlier in the year, and that was a good side.
That one, that one on seven?
Yeah.
The one that was on seven was.
That was good.
That was, yeah, so.
Beers in the back everywhere.
Well, the, I don't believe there's much interest in trapping.
There isn't. There's no price for, the price for highs is nothing. There isn't. There's no price for, the price for hides is nothing.
So there.
Ten, twelve dollars for a prime hide in the middle of winter.
Yeah.
And that's not even worth. The effort to put in to get them.
Right, you know, so. It's a shame to have to eradicate them, but sometimes that's the only thing you can do.
Can't relocate them. And what do you do with them?
Moll, a little bolt, put them in there and send them down the creek. Tell them to go somewhere.
It'll just be somebody else's problem.
Yeah, they get down to Patch's dam and then well, they must set up here.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Dave.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Yeah. Yep. Uh, Marsha Choffee, Marsha, not on. Okay. That moves us right down the line to Fire Chief Chris Clark. Christopher, you with us?
I'm here, Joey.
Okay.
Today we had our annual hose testing done. Uh, they were just finishing up. Uh, earlier this evening, so I'm not sure if any failed yet or not, but uh. As the day went on, I haven't heard anything. So I'm thinking we might have actually done good this year.
Good.
Um.
It's good.
Uh, I've been getting a, quite a few phone calls about fireworks this year. Um, I'm telling everybody there in August, a lot of disappointment in the town uh. For not having them on Fourth of July, but I told them they'll be on the townwide celebration, but. Maybe next year you guys would think differently, but up to you, I told them.
Yep.
Um. Other than that, really don't have anything to tell you tonight.
Okay. All right, yeah, we've, uh, Mike brought that up also, that fielding questions about uh fireworks. It uh change is always very difficult.
It can be.
Yeah.
Doesn't help the cities not doing their fireworks either. So everybody's looking for fireworks. Amazin's not doing theirs. You know, until the weekend.
Particular reason why I said he's not doing it.
I think they're doing theirs the weekend.
They are not doing them. They posted today because they were being independently funded and those independent funding sources ran out.
Yeah. Got the city?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's too bad.
They, they're supposed to, you know, the expla, the displays are more than ten thousand dollars. We're like, yep.
Yep, yeah. Fireworks are very.
So they are exploring options for next year, but they don't, I thought they're gonna have anything this year. So, yeah.
That's kind of a shame, but.
It's expensive.
It is. Um, I, I still like doing them. I think with our townwide celebration, I think it's kind of neat because nobody has fireworks in August.
Nope.
And, and it's kind of a fun thing to end summer. So we'll see how it goes. All right. Anything else, Chris?
I know, that's all I had.
Very good. All righty. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, that brings us um to our town clerk and treasurer, Carrie Clark.
Hi, Joe. All right, so. I put a couple of things on your desks for tonight.
Yeah, most of them pretty good.
I don't know. I, I think it's how you look at it. So um, the, the things that are on your desk, obviously you know what's on your desk, but I'll explain to the people who don't see it. Uh, I have an estimate of uh what our end of year fiscal year. Looked like. Um, I closed the year yesterday. So um, that's on your desk as well as uh the budget sheets for the end of the period. So you can see that my numbers match in each area. Um, and then. I do believe I put a copy of the last local option tax payment that we received for the fiscal year.
You did.
So, um. To go over it very quickly, uh, the local option tax money came in. For the fourth quarter as three hundred and thirty eight thousand, seven hundred sixty three dollars and ninety three cents. Um, we anticipated for the fiscal year one point two. Uh, and we ended up receiving one point six. So we got an um excess of four hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred fifty seven dollars, ninety nine cents. And that's great. Um, actually, it's. I, I'm really glad that happened because. Our budget this year didn't go as beautifully as one would have wanted it to. Um, there were a lot of lines overexpensed. Um, and there are. Three things. So on your summary sheet, on your estimate sheet, the bottom number that um says final excess number. Your sheet says, because I, your sheet says seven hundred and eighty one thousand, four hundred and eighty four dollars. Um, it's gonna be a little newer number and I'm gonna give you that number and tell you why. Basically, first of all, that's a lot of money to be in excess of. Um. Not a, not a really, I mean, you, some people could look at it and go, hey, that's great. Uh, better to be over than under, right? Well, when we're a nonprofit and uh we're supposed to be budgeting like on point. Truly, that number should be zero if we could have a perfect year. So. We. There, there's a lot of things that kind of saved us this year. Um, and if these didn't happen, then we would have been significantly deficit. Um, there are three things. Let me just find them. The lot money saved us. The excess and lot money saved us. Uh, let's see, let me find my notes. Oh. Um, bank interest saved us. We only budgeted nine thousand and we got a hundred and seventy seven thousand. And the delinquent taxes, and I don't want you to take this wrong, um, they saved us. And it's not necessarily the collection of them. It's more that. We budgeted a hundred grand and we got two hundred and fifty two grand. So we kind of didn't budget correctly on that one.
We increased that one for next year.
We did.
Yeah, but it's though, so basic. Well, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but the items that we seem to be over are the ones that. We have the least amount of control over, like the one percent tax, uh, revenues from bank interest. And I think that's kind of. The last couple of years, that's been a little bit of a trend. So this November, we might have to take a little harder look at that.
I completely agree with you, Joe. Um, Sue, Susan and I were talking. Um, and between the two of us, you know, these are our words together. It, it's going to benefit us um in the fall if we each take. Better care of what we're budgeting for and try to get as close as possible to what we can get. And take those two things that you said, the lot money and the interest into consideration really carefully when we go and do it. Um, I also wanted to, so. Uh, Andrew came to visit and I asked him to come over because I was going through the. Minutes of a couple of select boards ago where you guys decided that you wanted to put, have the Cortina funds. Cover the deficit of the police budget. So if you look on your estimate sheet under police, which would be on the right side, the right hand side. At the top, the excess is sixty seven thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and forty eight cents. They would have been very much in the hole if it hadn't been for the Cortina funds. And that money, the sixty seven thousand dollars. That was mo, made a motion to, to make sure that it goes into the next fiscal year, which we just started.
Okay, yeah, that, that's that excess from, that's the uh Cortina funds, right?
Well, that's what, when you net everything together and the Cortina covered your deficit, that's what's left over. So. That number at the bottom of your sheet, seven eighty one, four eighty four. Um, if you subtract out sixty seven thousand dollars, our real access is um seven fourteen, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and seventy six. Still incredibly significant. Um. So. The, the last thing that I kind of wanted to put out there. Um, and, and Dave, also I gave them a copy of your carryover. It's attached to their documents and I can certainly give that to you. What I believe it is before Andrew gets a hold of everything. Um, and I. I, I, you can see that the carryover, um, your budget kind of went deficit as well, but the carryover. Helped you as it does every year. Um, so I have. Right now, a tentative carryover for neck, well, this fiscal year that we just started, three hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and thirty six dollars. And you and I can look at that if you want to, um, closer when you come in. Can give you a copy of that.
So some of that is um. Something I think we've discussed together, the, the board and Dave and, and to some extent you, Carrie, is to try to. Get the highway budget to have less carryover and get that kind of down. Some, and so this, in a way, that's a good thing that we're going in that direction now.
They also budgeted for more of the, of the one percent money for this coming budget for this.
Yeah, yeah. We, we've increased one bit. So, so basically I think what we do pretty well is budget for the expenses. The part that we're having difficulties with is the income side because it's so volatile.
And, and so one of the things that Susan and I were talking about today, when we go to look at the lot money in the future. Is the lot money, as you know, is one percent interest on the things people buy, rooms and meals and all of that. And as the world gets where it is, all the prices are increasing, therefore. Our one percent that we receive is going to significantly increase too because of the sign of the times.
Right. So, and, and so. As we move forward, we're gonna have to look into the crystal ball and look at the history and try to say, okay. You know, the, the last thing I want to do as a board member, say, okay, we're gonna get one point five million and we're gonna put this into. The income side for the general and wherever it goes, and we come up short. That's that. And I think that's the conservative attitude that. As managers trying to do this are doing. Um. But we could try to get it closer. I, I, I think we'll have to, you know, when we have this discussion in October, November, as budgets are done. Um, I'm not sure what we did budgeting. I think we went one point three or one point four.
For this year.
But this year's number will be a much better guide for next year because the rate of inflation has come down. So.
Right.
When we were doing it last year, we're still kind of, you know, in the midst of a.
Yeah, you don't, yeah, it's really hard, but um, I always feel that as a group. From your office, Carrie, and the board side and the department heads, if we. Always budget our expenses fairly close to what we actually spend, that's. That's what you really can control. The, and the income side, like I say, is always so volatile. Um, there were years where we never got a hundred thousand from. Uh, bank interest. That's, that's a quite a lot. And, and that's five years ago, that was unheard of.
Right. Um, so the, I wanted to, to leave my discussion tonight with this um thought to ponder. And I know a lot of, a lot of things go into this particular thought, but um, so. Today, the listers um lodged the grand list. So I had kind of a, an idea of a number for the grand list and, and plugging it into the tax rate calculation. Um, we also this week got a download of what the education rates were going to be for our town. So I plugged that in too, and I still have some work to do on the calculation. That's gonna be something I do in the morning as far as like. Getting it down to see exactly maybe what it's gonna do to our taxes. Um, but my thought and my question and, and having you think about this maybe for next time is. I understand that the voters decided, let's sweep this over into the capital improvements fund. But since the taxes are gonna be so crazy. This coming year with so many factors, and I saw a couple of factors today. Wouldn't it be really great if we took the high road and said, let's take that seven hundred and fourteen and reduce the taxes for some, for. For our taxpayers? I think that they. If we could do something like that, we would be looked upon as, that's amazing. Um, I've had a lot of apprehensive people come in and um they're really not looking forward to getting their tax bill. And across the state, we're looking at people moving out of Vermont because of it. I think it would be who vast to do something like that and see if it can help them a little bit. Just something to think about.
We have an update on what our capital improvement fund balance is.
Nope, um, that, uh, that is a work in progress. Um, as you see, the capital improvement line is put into the estimate. Um, but it takes, it's taking a lot. We have a good start on the project from Bill. Um, but it comes down to yesterday, we were going through. Each of the expenditures in making sure that it was attached to a department and if they. Had any money left over from what the, the board approved. So we're in steps and we're nowhere near a balance quite yet. But that really shouldn't matter because the money that you see is already factored in to what we have on the budget sheet.
Yeah. Which I'm, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure if I follow.
Estimate.
Which money is factored in where?
If you look at your estimate sheet, you're gonna see the capital improvement line expenditure. Taken out of there. So it's an eight hundred and ninety thousand dollar, eight hundred and three figure. It's on the left side of your estimate.
So, okay, so the.
Yep. Okay, so the eight ninety is what we estimate that we have spent, right?
Say that one more time.
The eight hundred and ninety thousand for the less the capital improvement expenditure, that's what we, at this point, we're pretty sure we've earmarked, right?
That's, that's what's in the line right now. If you can, if you look at your budget sheet report, that's what's in that line.
Okay.
So when we look on the last page. Uh, the statement on net position. General capital improvements line right now says one point seven eight million.
Where are you?
On the third page of this um.
The modified cash basis page.
Yeah. What are you looking at, Matt? Oh, okay.
Seven, eight, two.
Looking at that page that's attached to it that I highlighted Dave's carryover on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's from my audit report in June of last year. So I had to use that carryover number for Dave. So that he can figure out what he had this year. So that paper has nothing to do with the capital improvements.
So the line right below it, Carrie, says Ja, general capital improvements. Okay.
So that, for the audit, I want you to look at the budget status report pages and on page. In the general, um, it's five, three, three, six. It's on page four toward the bottom, capital improvements expense. The actual is eight ninety, eight oh three.
Oh, so, yeah.
Okay.
Fifty, okay. And, and that's what we've pretty much, those are all of the earmarks that we did for the building, the trucks in different places.
That's what we've expend, expended this year out of the capital improvements. Yes, you are correct.
Okay, all right.
So, so my question was. Or I guess comment would be before we can decide what else we're gonna do with funds, we need to know how much. Remains in there.
Yeah.
And then, but you know, after that, I don't know legally what we can do if the voters have voted to say we're gonna do a certain thing with it.
Well, the capital improvement fund, I believe, is at our, somewhat at our discretion.
We have.
Um, one of the things.
You just use it to pay down the bond and.
Right, so there's numerous ways that you can help the taxpayers with reducing their taxes. So if we pay. You can take and put money toward the budgets, which is. Doable, but if you do that, then. But if you do that, then if you need something, then do you borrow money? So I think this is gonna require some, thought and some discussion because one of the things I've always said is that, um, and I'll use our depreciation funds as a, um, example. We are going to replace equipment in the town, whether it's a fire truck, a highway truck, police car, whatever. And if you have that money in an account, there's a tax onto everybody's tax bill for that monies. We are able to purchase vehicles without borrowing money, so we do not pay interest. We are actually getting interest paid. If we did not have these funds, every time you wanna buy a police car, fire truck, you go out and get a loan. So now you're going to tax the taxpayers for the price of the vehicle plus the price of the interest. Granted municipalities, these don't pay a lot in interest. We can get loans better than some places, but this is the same way. The capital improvement fund is designed to handle expenditure, some of them planned. Like the renovations downstairs could run us a half a million dollars. And if we have that half million dollars in an account, capital improvement fund, we can do those renovations and pay for them without borrowing money and paying interest. We get paid interest. And this saves, it's saves the taxpayers money in the long run. So there's, there's multiple ways to do it. You can take an instant, um, deduction and put a whole bunch of money in, but then it's gone. And, and then you wanna do the improvements, you go borrow the money and then you pay interest. So we, we need to really take a long look at different approaches to how we can help make it more affordable to live in town. I do believe a lot of our tax rate is going to be, um, around what our school rates are gonna be. And we have absolutely no control. We can control about thirty percent of the tax rate that folks pay, and that's the municipal side of government. And I think with Carrie's help, with our department's help, we've done a pretty good job of keeping those things in line, the things we can't control. Um, and we don't have control over, we can try to make our side of it easier to swallow. But you have to look at a, a long ongoing picture as to what you do with excess monies. So, but that's, that's just, you know, we, we've got a few months until we get to budget time and everybody can kind of come up with some ideas and do some thinking.
I think we're, where this, where we've lost, we've kind of lost track in this town is the, the capital improvement fund, the way I see it was made to take excesses from budgets and put those into a fund.
Right.
For capital improvements. Well, now we have this options tax that's paying more than what we're budgeting and we're just taking that excess and slapping into that capital improvement fund. Where most municipalities would be taking this four hundred and seventeen thousand and offsetting taxes the next year with it. So that four hundred and seven, the way I think that should operate is that four hundred and seventeen thousand should go to offsetting the taxes for the next year.
One of, one of the reasons for the capital improvement fund and why it was set up is to protect the one percent money. And, and so if you do not have that earmarked and you do not have a place for that, um, we aren't entitled to it. So that was one of, that's how we got into a predicament about ten years ago.
We also could just budget for it, right? I mean, you could just have a line item, general budgets, whatever, however much you wanna raise for capital improvement fund every year.
You know, the, the other thing is that we can put a limit, we could do that too. We could say, so, so prior to the capital improvement fund, any monies that were left in a budget, fire, police, rec or general, went to offset the taxes for the next year. That's the way that worked. When the town introduced the one percent money, we upset the apple cart big time because now we were getting monies. And for a few years, we did not spend those as fa- we didn't have the mechanism and we didn't understand what we were getting as a town. So we acquired some, some monies way ahead and in the boards that was sitting in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, came up with this capital improvement plan and there's a couple, they just, they could have done it a couple of ways. They could have said, okay, the capital improvement fund will be funded by the one percent money and excesses from budgets will still go to reduce taxes. That's another way. So it's, it's a couple of different ways. The one thing, and, and it's what I said earlier, is that if you put the four hundred thousand excess into next year's budget, it's immediate savings. If it sits in the capital improvement fund and we spend it to do the remodeling downstairs, say, we're still gonna spend that half million to do the downstairs, but now we don't borrow money. So you gotta look at it both ways. You get immediate relief or you get relief over a long period of time. Cause if we go to the voters and tell them we need to borrow a half million dollars to do the downstairs. And so we just put four hundred thousand, so, so you gotta look at it two ways and.
I don't disagree. I think there's different ways you can look at it in the long run, but of course in the short run, we, you, you know, the voters voted to do it this way.
Right. And, and, and we'll go this route, but if, if, if another plan comes up, I mean, things can be changed. And if we come up with a plan that manages and, and we have seen, now I think this is the third year running that our one percent money has been above anticipation. So the trend is there, hopefully if that trend continues. And this is without one major, um, hospitality establishment in Rutland Town. We, we have lost one. That, if the, both of those places were in business down there and doing public, um, business with the public, that one percent money, that could easily be half again as much or more. Because we're losing a tremendous amount of income from what used to be the holiday. You know, so.
The online sales are really saving us now. You know, they're making, making everybody collect on the.
They're, 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 yeah, so, so we're getting there, but, um, this is really good, Carrie. I, I really appreciate the work you put in, um, a lot of stuff here to think about and we'll work on coming up with the best plan to try to make this work better.
Okay, um, I think, so I'm sitting next to Chris and he wants to say something. He said.
I don't know how many people in town actually care about renovating the downstairs of the town hall. I mean, you've been talking about it for five years and it's never getting done. Personally, I'd rather save some tax money than see new sheet rock in the basement of town hall that's used for absolutely nothing. Except for voting.
Um, we, we have some pretty good plans for down there, Chris. Um, there's be office space for our planning commission and there will be a public, uh, area down there that will allow for, um, meetings to be held. Right now, when organizations or groups come and they wanna rent space here at the town or use space, they use the boardroom. And so the plan is to renovate the downstairs and make this a community available, um, area. Similar to some extent as to what's at the central and fire station. Um, that is a unique, um, area in the meeting room down there in the training room. And we do not feel it's appropriate to infringe on the fire department and, you know, try to have stuff there. So our plan is to have a facility similar to that in this building. So that, um, the downstairs can be used for those purposes. Um, there will be, it, it's something that I think the town doesn't have. And that's what the board has felt over the last several years. We've been at this for a while. You're right, about five years. Um, it's, it's a project in progress. We have started, um, it required multiple things that included upgrading the electrical to this building, um, moving, um, infrastructure around down there. And, um, I think in the end it will be a area that is basically isolated from the rest of the building. So that if a group or whatever within the town needs a meeting place, wants access to the internet, wants to be able to do a, um, some type of meeting similar to what the board offers. There'll be a larger space and more room and, and that's what the plan is. Um, it's not just hanging sheet rock and dressing it up. It's actually has a function and a, um, a, a, a goal and a plan in place. And it will also still be used for voting. But that's our objective.
Well, I hope it works out. I mean, the place is, I don't know how old it is, but before it falls over, you know, and you're gonna put a half a million bucks into it, I'm hoping you're gonna.
That, that's an estimate. I mean, that, we don't know what, we haven't got a construction cost yet, but, um, this, this is a unique historical building. It'll be here a while.
Hope so.
Yep, thanks for your input.
About, kind of think about this too, and I want the downstairs done. And that's just an example, but I want it done as much as anybody else does too. But if we think about it, just think about what this year is going to entail. Are we actually gonna get to do anything down there in time? Or can we save the taxpayers some money in their pocket for the year? And continue to think about, you know, doing downstairs, but it's not gonna happen right off. Maybe we can help out our taxpayers just for a year or so to get back on their feet. It's just something that about, and I think that's what Chris is trying to say.
Doing anything, are we?
No, 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 we're good. This is all informational at this point, um, expressing some ideas and I, I think we've, we've all got a kind of an idea. Well, I think we're all on the same page and, and want the same goal and reach the same destination with just a couple of different roads to get there.
Exactly.
It's no, there's no set arrival time at this point. We're not like on the,
Yeah.
We're not on the cusp of spending five hundred thousand dollars on anything.
We, we, we don't have the projected cost yet and we haven't put it out to bid. So anyway, anything else, Carrie?
No, those are, that's all I have and, you know, just talk about it amongst yourselves and maybe we'll talk and the next select.
Oh yeah, we got a lot of discussion to do. Alright, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Chris. Alright, moving on to Mike Delahanty.
Good evening, every guy, everybody.
How's it going?
We're all here, all three of us and a couple of, uh, we're, we're a pretty short crew tonight, Mike.
I see that, I see that, um. Been a pretty busy couple of weeks, uh, you know, nothing, nothing to crazy to report on except for I did want to bring up and acknowledge, uh, everyone involved in last week's propane leak down there at the Hampton Inn. Which was on the twenty fourth, if anybody doesn't remember, but, um, that event down there was truly a, a incredible team effort by pretty much anybody in the county. But, um, really started off with Corporal Loizao, the state, of the modest state police with his initial size up even advising of the leak, uh, just when, when units were rolling. But just want to acknowledge, uh, Chief Clark and the town fire department. Kurt and his crews out from the Clarendon Fire Department, um, Dave Sears Highway Crew came down, bringing down signage. Chief Dumas was there. Obviously the state police, um, oh Kurt, sorry, your excavator as well. Thank you to your excavator. But, uh, but between regional and the Hazmat team and Green Mountain Power and Earl's Truck Repair and Irving Energy and Carrera Services. It was, it was an all in collaboration and that situation, uh, could have been a lot worse. Um, but with a real good team effort, I know a lot of cross-training happens and this is why. Um, when you get groups together, the color, the uniform and the design doesn't matter because it was everybody getting together for the same goal. And I think, I think the outcome was, was, I don't wanna say better than expected, but it was the one we wanted and we're looking for. And I, I just wanted to acknowledge that on record that, that was a really great job done by ninety nine percent of volunteers who worked all through the night. Um, probably all had to go to work that next day dragging for at least twenty four hours. But, um, but yeah, that was a, that was a really incredible night. To see everybody work.
Very good. I think that everybody appreciates that.
Beyond that, I've got nothing.
Well, that was pretty good.
Question.
Sure.
Mike, do you have an update on that building on four and Gleason? I don't remember if that was completely resolved as far as getting it, uh, secured all the way around or?
I don't have a, I don't have a answer for you tonight, but let me reach back out to Mr. Rogério to get a date set, uh, to do a onsite visit.
Anything else? Are we all good? Alright, very good, Mike. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Chief.
I have, uh, very little at this point. Mike took, went out of my cell. Said everything that I wanted to say about that situation. Other than that, uh, everybody wants to come get a report that I guess I'm supposed to do on this because insurance company is gonna pay. I did have one phone call tale, wait, he was at the, uh, Hanfords at eleven o'clock in the morning was, uh, approached by so, somebody started, startled her. She lives in Cuttingsville. She said she'll never shop in the Hanfords again. She'll go to go to Wollap before she comes back there just cause, uh, the way that she was approached by a certain person. I looked, checked her. I could never find the person, but I appreciated her, her insight and how she felt. She's a widow. And I have more people, I think I, well, I have a plan. We'll do something a little different down there in the plaza. We might be having to have somebody to sit down there. Uh, uh, there's two of us on, one of us gotta sit down there and do that. That's the only way I can say I can fix it at this point. Well, now I don't, I know Lynn's on vacation, so I don't have any of the stats. Uh, we'll get them next time when she comes back.
So I missed the last board meeting, but I see in here that we have a letter to Amy for her services.
Yes.
Have you now gone down to that next level of now we gotta find another person?
Yes, we have. And we got permission last time to put it on. And we've had, uh, one person so far. Actually, I quit her some jobs, so we'll see what happens.
So would you be looking at someone to be specifically like she was a school resource officer, a certain level of training? To be able to help you with some of the other stuff?
It'd be nice to have a level three. It'd be nice to have a level three certified person.
Level three, that'll allow them to help you with your other deep, other ones outside of the school.
Correct.
Do you have a copy of this that we need to?
I have a copy in this folder. There is a copy for us to sign.
There was another one or two, I think, in there. We mentioned that.
There's two letters in here. One is to Christopher Taft from V-Trans and one is to Angie Shimmerhorn for her services. And there, all of us on the board will sign these. We'll get those out. Three of us will sign them tonight and the other two will win there. I have the magic green folder right there.
Arthur Angie's in, like, we shot today. She was in trainee, so she couldn't talk, but I'm gonna go up, so I suspect she'll do well.
Good, good. So she'll be missed. You know, that's, it's hard to find good people. And sometimes good people are grabbed up by other people because they're good people. That's the way it works.
You, are you sticking around?
Bye.
Yeah.
Yes.
You'd be here for maybe a few minutes of executive session at the end of this.
Any questions?
Thank you. Um, JP texted me and he will not be able to attend the meeting tonight. Um, there were a couple of issues with our public safety building. Um, I'm not sure. I didn't get a chance to read all the information regarding the cameras and the, I'm not sure what that's all about. What this, what we're, something we're missing or what the sixty seven, I didn't get a chance. Did you read it all?
I, I, I read his email twice or three times. And I'm a little confused and I don't know, I'll just, I'll mention my confusion in case he watches this later. We can remember to ask him or
Yeah.
Somebody can ask him, but, um, good, what he said was we were not, we had hoped to get a grant. We didn't get the grant, but we need the stuff the grant was gonna cover. So we authorized Ted to go ahead and purchase it. I don't remember talking about that particular grant. So I'm hoping that the cost that he mentioned was something that was already built into our calculations for this and what we were.
I don't know, cause I'm not sure. I, just a little bit I read, um, it, it was security cameras and stuff, but the price tag of around sixty seven thousand, which to me thought was staggering.
Well, and again, if that's something that we have to like dig out from under a rock, you know, again, we're, we're back to capital improvements and what's the balance? Cause there isn't another rock.
We may, we may have to fund it.
Whether it's that or, or Cortina Fund, but those, we have plans for whatever that balances. So I really don't wanna have to go there.
You know, any, anything about that, Ted?
Teddy, put, put in the grant, but we were denied the grant.
And, and what is it for though? That's. Around that building?
Yes, it's probably, I think.
My recollection, I remember he did one that was like a. My recollection, I remember he did one that was like a hundred and fifty. That was different, right?
Operations Center.
Right, right. So the sixty-seven, I don't remember talking about, which in this context is good news because it means that we weren't relying on it in our cost estimate and, and our, our determination of how much we needed to borrow.
Right.
So my hope is we already have the money to cover this. We don't have to go.
I believe so.
Yeah, I'm not sure. So that, I think that's, we've got to get a little more information for what we want to do. Um, but, but I'm, I was con- concerned if we, as a town and as planning this building, we missed this item of need in that whole process. I would like to think we.
I remember going to a meeting and we talked about it.
Right.
Put into the, I thought it was put into the budget.
Right. And we were hoping it was gonna be offset by a grant, but it appears that maybe, so let's hope if not, that would end up being, uh, an expenditure out of that money, which again, if you have that and you don't have to borrow, it, it's, it's a good thing to have that.
We don't.
Yeah, well, we, we just need to get better, more details on this too.
And I'd like to know what the balance of that contingency amount is too. Cause I think we spent most of that.
It was about two hundred and fifty thousand when we started, but I think we, we whittled away between the unsuitable soils and some overtime and some winter conditions. We probably chipped in with pretty good. Um, anyway, then the other, um, item that JP did, I think he, um, emailed us most of the board members on was the re- the retainage that is part of the contract and they were asking that to be reduced. And I think that's a full board discussion, um, but I'm not in favor of reducing that. The, it sounds like the contractor wants us to reduce that retainage so they can pay their subs. Um, but I think that that's up to them. The, the folks that are done, the concrete guys, the other ones that are done and moving on. Um, it's up to them to take, it shouldn't be us paying the MS so they can pay their guys. Um, I think we should stick to that, but I think that'll be hopefully in two weeks, um, we can have that on the, get a couple of things, Bill. We'll have to get some of this clarified with JP on the, and Ted on the cameras and the security and the, um, that retainage reduction. And we'll try to have that on the agenda for the sixteen. So we can, and maybe have some more information. So we can make a, I, I don't think I have enough information to even try to make a decision on that. So, um, but anyway, so I think we're all done, but that's pretty much where we are. And just so you know, JP's been out there and he has been doing his job. So anyway, you're up, Bill.
Kevin, no, cause he asked me to let him know.
We're right on track. He's been so informed.
Uh, alright, not, not a lot left to go over. Uh, in your packet, uh, for the, the last thing in there, uh, first thing in there is, uh, the contract for Brookfield Service for our annual generator maintenance agreement. The last page has, uh, all of our generators, all six of them now, uh, including the new one is encountered in four in there. Uh, this is for two, uh, I'm sorry, one round of, uh, service to all the generators and a second, uh, service at the one at the school, which is inconsistent with what we've done in years past. So, uh, the total is four thousand eighty-four dollars. If we pay, if you approve this, that'll go in the orders for the next board meeting and we'll get the discount.
You mean four thousand eight hundred and four dollars?
That's number two.
Yeah, four thousand eight hundred and four. Yeah.
You had all the numbers, just not in the right order. That's right, yeah, so.
Is that what we, I mean, that's in line with.
Yeah, it's pretty much what we've been doing. I mean, they, they come in and they do a full service and then, and then a checkup.
There is a detail there about plan one and plan two and what, what that is. So it's, it's, they go through quite a bit.
So I guess I mostly approve and authorize Joe to sign.
Right, get to sign another one?
Yep.
Sure you, make sure Bill checks your homework before you leave.
Don't take any foot paper for that.
Alright, so, um, we have before us the contract for Brookfield Services for the maintenance on our six standby generators throughout the town. And if we pay this in advance, the cost is four thousand eight hundred and four dollars. We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any against? Nope. So I vote aye. I do believe we're good. Alright.
Alright, uh, we recently had, uh, all of the heat pumps at town hall and the fire station service. Uh, they had been a little while stills were done, so we had, um, vendor come through and do those. They did a very good job. Everything is, uh, running much more efficiently now. And, uh, we had, uh, the, there was a part on order for the generator at the central outlet station. Um, they went to do a coolant service and the starter has been, has seized, so we don't know when the last time it ran. Uh, but it will not run, so that part is on order. Uh, but we have, that, that'll come out of the balance of generator maintenance, which is what we plan that for. Uh, that is, oh, and town hall will be, will be closed on Thursday for the holiday. That is everything I have.
That's everything you have. So I have this contract. Do you know which line? I guess this one here.
For Brookfield?
Yeah, it says authorize signature. I'm assuming that's.
Uh, yes.
That's me.
Yeah, that's you.
The three of us will sign those two letters, Bill. They'll be in here. The two contracts are signed there. Yeah. I think that was it. Which one did I sign? I think I signed my copy. Yeah, we don't want that copy. We want the clean copy that doesn't have letters and names on it. I'll do that again. Alright, um, so that's pretty much it.
That's all I got.
There, we discussed the, um, highway committee meeting, there was a personnel committee meeting. Anything you'd like to tell us?
Personnel committee meeting, uh, Mary and I completed our first review of the personnel manual, which has been pared down from, I think, fifty-five pages to like thirty-nine or so, maybe less. We got a lot of things we need to go back over with Teresa now, so, but we're gonna try to keep flogging that when Mary's available. Get it to you for your bedtime reading sometimes soon.
I think we're making some pretty good progress. It's, that is something that is very cumbersome, very difficult. And, uh, it takes a lot of waiting to get through. I do believe. Lot of waiting, but I think that is, I think in the end, it's, it's gonna be worthwhile. Um, so we didn't sign any minutes. So we'll just include them in the next one, so we can do that for the.
You'll have them for next time. Alright.
Sorry. So that brings us to the end of all we have talked about maintenance, V Trans, that, that, we did the two committees, Bill's done his thing. I understand that Matt would like to have a brief executive session with Kevin. Is that my understanding?
Legal advice on contractual matter.
Contractual matter, okay.
It's motion.
Second.
Okay, I will.
Do we want to add in?
Yes.
Alright, I think we're good. Alright, so we will be. Alright, so we're out of executive session at seven fifty-three. Um, there is no action to be taken, so I think we're good.
We'll go to Jerry.
Second, all in favor? Very good. Thank you.